Good evening and welcome to Monday, January 23rd Board Meeting. We will start the meeting with a Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Thank you. Mrs. Lavelle, can we please have a roll call?
Mrs. Costelli.
Here.
Mr. Doring.
Here.
Mrs. Passeretti.
Here.
Mrs. Raccio.
Here.
Mrs. Reed.
Here.
Mrs. Regan.
Here.
Mrs. Roscoe.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
Mr. Votto. Eight members present and voting.
Thank you very much. And next, we will have our student board representatives. First, we have Paige from Lyman Hall. Come on up. Thanks for joining us.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to give a brief update about the activities and events of this past month at Lyman Hall. From the College and Career Center, the Credit for Life Trip is back. This Financial Reality Fair for district sophomores is happening on February 28th at Wallingford Park and Rec. The College and Career Center is hard at work preparing students for this experience. From the Athletics Department, indoor track has been a great start to the season as we've already had numerous student athletes qualify for states. Our sprint medley relay consisting of Owen Rich, Mike Fisher, Tim Conklin, and Tom Conklin ran their fastest time of the season, 3:44.27 on Saturday. This team qualified them for the New Balance Nationals meet in March. For boys swimming and diving, we've had a handful of participants also qualify for states. Brothers Kenny and Jerick Lagamow have won numerous events, and diver Lincoln Busa is off to a great start. For the boys and girls basketball teams, both teams currently have five wins on the season with sights on getting enough wins to qualify for the state tournament. Freshmen Grace Mack and Ellie Madancy have stepped in nicely on the varsity team for girls, while it's been a team effort for the boys team as different players have had big performances to lead the Trojans. Friday night was a great night for Wallingford basketball as the annual doubleheader at Sheen was split with the Titans taking the girls game and Lyman Hall taking home the boys game. For Lyman Hall hockey, last Monday was a great night for Wallingford hockey as Lyman Hall and Sheen battled a two-to-two tie. We played again Saturday, and Jimbo Coors scored four goals to lead the Trojans to a 7-3 victory. Dylan Florio has played extremely well in goal all season for the Trojans. They played this afternoon today versus Branford. It was an awesome day as best buddies and Unified Sports Teams were guests for our hockey team. The Unified Sports Team began practicing basketball earlier this month, and they will have their first competition when they head to Foran of Milford on February 1st. And the cheerleaders have done a great job at the basketball games while preparing for their competition season. They open up at Quinnipiac University on Saturday. Just some other updates. Our social studies teacher, John Popilizio, presented to staff members and Lyman Hall student community a gratitude wall that his students created over the holidays. As part of a social emotional learning lesson, a poster board was displayed outside of his classroom which contained statements from all five of his classes on what they were grateful for in their lives. Students were about being grateful for their families, teachers, friends, feeling happy, healthy, safe, and secure, not only at home but in their school as well. As you know, social emotional learning is a big focus of the school year this year at Lyman Hall. Students at Lyman Hall will begin planning their courses for school next year. They begin meeting with their counselors to schedule classes next week. Project Graduation is working behind the scenes in planning this year's program for graduating seniors. In the coming weeks at Lyman Hall, seniors will be informed on this year's event. Special ed teacher Sarah Babino is working with the Lyman Hall staff members. She's among the staff members lurking the event. And senior Peyton Duran has been chosen to be the student ambassador in relaying information to the senior class. Just some general announcements. For our school, there will be an early dismissal for students on Thursday, January 26th because of professional development. In February, on the 16th, there will be an early dismissal, and on the 17th, there will be another early dismissal for winter break. On the 20th, there is no school for Presidents' Day, and on the 23rd, there's a PTAC meeting in the Richard A. Otto Auditorium. And that's all the announcements I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I love the winter sports. It's so weird that we're already talking about graduation and next year's classes, though. It just feels like this year is flying by. Next, we have Leah. Welcome, Leah.
Hi. I hope everyone had a great holiday and is starting their new year off on the right foot. So some updates about Sheen is the second marking period ended last week on Friday, the 20th, and this Monday kicked off the start to the second semester. On January 16th was the Sheen vs. Lyman Hall hockey game, which ended in a tie, two-to-two. This past Friday, Sheen hosted Lyman Hall for the rivalry basketball game. The girls varsity won 50-30, and the boys lost 44-53. Sheen welcomed its new and improved mascot to the school this past Friday to show off our school spirit at the basketball game. Boys' basketball currently has a record of 2-9, while the girls have a record of 10-2. Sheen Boys Ice Hockey currently has a record of four wins, five losses, and two ties. A project the student council did this past month was we told teachers that they could dress down if they donated money, and the teachers of Wallingford raised $560, and then we donated it to the police and fire departments of Wallingford. Boxes were put together for them, including gift cards, snacks, hand sanitizers, and other necessities to thank them for their hard work. On January 25th, Ms. Pukowski will present the upcoming course selection process at the Virtual Parent Teacher Advisory Council Meeting. Upcoming this week, on the 26th, students have a half-day for professional development. February 6th will be the start of National School Counseling Week for the schools, and during the month of February, juniors, sophomores, and freshmen will start to plan out their schedules for the next school year.
Thank you so much. Wow. We're talking about the next school year a lot now. Seems like it's flying by. Next on our agenda, we have presentations and awards. I don't see any. So we will move into public comment. Is there anybody that would like to make public comment? We have no one here for public comment. Onto... The consent agenda. Is there anybody that would like something removed from the consent agenda? You can remove it here if you'd like.
Yeah, I would just like to remove item number 7.8.
Okay. Anybody else? Hearing nothing else, I would entertain a motion to approve Consent Agenda items numbers 7.1 through 7.7 and 7.9 through 7.16. Second. Mrs. Costelli first and Ms. Regan second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Items removed from the consent agenda. Item 7.8, approval to accept a monetary gift donated to Pond Hill Elementary School from Toyota of Wallingford to be used for academic and social emotional materials to ensure student success as well as community building projects for the staff, students, and families of Pond Hill with a value of $20,000. Ms. Regan, this is yours.
Yes, I asked for this removed only because I'd like to find... First of all, I'm amazed and astounded, and I'm so appreciative that Toyota of Wallingford made this very generous gift. I guess my question is, and it's really more around, is there any way that we can see how it's being used? I mean, this is a substantial... I don't know what the process is, I guess. It's like with the... You know, I know that when we get five or $600 gifts, it's usually supplies and something like that, but this is a pretty sizable sum. And I'm just curious as to like, what is the process? And is there like an accounting that we would be able to have visibility? Not that we want to check in on it, but I, you know, I do think that it's something that we should... That we just have, I guess, an understanding of how it will be used. That's all.
Absolutely. Great question. So first, I want to just say thank you because this is a very large donation, and we truly appreciate it for the school and for the district. It is very kind and very generous. And I know the families and the staff at Pond Hill and Mr. Dirksen as well are really appreciative of this. But to your question, yes, absolutely. So what will happen is, once this goes... If this goes through and we accept it this evening, then central office staff and Mr. Dirksen will sit down with Mr. Barone as well to kind of discuss and see what their needs are. So I know Mr. Dirksen has done some research with the staff and with the families and talked about it, and they've sort of come up with some kind of wish list. But we're going to go over that and discuss what all the goals and objectives are for what they're asking for, and then we would be happy to share that with all of you as well. And we'll actually also, you know, follow up with Toyota of Wallingford as well to thank them and to share with all of them what we did put the donation towards.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Mrs. Costelli.
I just want to say thank you to Toyota because this is not the first time that they've been generous. They have supported our district for years, and I think every year I've been on the board 15 years. I just... And when I go in there and have my car serviced, I tend to make sure they know that, too. I go up to them and tell them, "We are very, very appreciative of all they do, and kudos to them for reaching out and supporting us."
Mrs. Passeretti.
Out of curiosity, was there anything in particular that... I shouldn't... I don't want to say motivation, but was there anything that might have sparked the donation that we want to honor?
I'm not 100% positive. I know Mr. Dirksen did meet with him, but I don't know who initiated the conversation. I do know there had been donations, as Mrs. Costelli had shared in the past, to Stevens Elementary School. I think it was actually even prior to when I came here to Wallingford. So I'm not 100%, but I will definitely find that out. And I do think it's very generous and very kind.
Absolutely.
And I know we had talked a little bit earlier about what we could do after we decide how we're going to spend the money, how we can make sure we recognize and thank publicly as well, in addition to just this. Because I think this is very generous and really kind to support our students and families.
And the reason I'm asking is I was curious if this was in the spirit of Principal Valero. I know how much this was her heart. So I was... Thought I would mention that this... I wasn't sure if it was a coincidence or not, but I'm sure if she were here, she would be honored and overwhelmed with this amazing gift.
I'm sure she would be. Absolutely. I will agree.
Mr. Ross? Did you... Your hand's on your buzzer, so I wasn't sure. Did you have a comment?
Mrs. Passeretti, I echo your statement and everybody's statement. I do know that Toyota has phenomenal ties to our community and personal connections with the youth at Pond Hill. So I'm sure that some of this really did have to do with Mrs. Valero and to help the staff, Mr. Dirksen, and the families there. So I echo that they are a phenomenal community partner, have been for years, and we wish them all the continued success in this community. With that, I will entertain a motion to approve item 7.8.
So moved. We have a first and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We are now on to correspondence. Mrs. Roscoe.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Raccio. So I have a good number of correspondence. So we are so grateful for all of these donations and all of these thank you notes. So the first one I would like to acknowledge is from Cindy and the Lavalet family, and this was a thank you note that we received. Dear Danielle and the Wallingford Board of Education members, thank you so much for the lovely flowers you sent upon the passing of our dear Colin. He and I always very much enjoyed our years working for the Board of Education, teaching Wallingford's wonderful students. Thank you for remembering us at this very sad time with sincere appreciation. Just take a moment to acknowledge that service to our community and to our past students of Wallingford. Our next thank you comes from Mr. Greg Dirksen, the interim principal of Pond Hill, and it is to Anna Foley for assorted seasonal and celebration decorations that have been received to the school. I will also read this thank you note. Dear Ms. Foley, thank you for your generous donation of seasonal celebration decorations to Pond Hill Elementary School. These will be used by our staff. On behalf of faculty and staff, I want to express our appreciation for your kindness and generosity. Yours truly, Greg Dirksen, interim principal. Thank you so much for that. I'm sure it will make Pond Hill very lively. Our next thank you is from Christina Kiley and the principal of EC Stevens Elementary School. This goes to East Center Market for their holiday gift donations in supporting of two families during the Adopt a Family program. I will also read this thank you note. Dear Sarah, Marissa, and friends, on behalf of our students, families, and staff, we would like to thank you, the staff at East Center Market, for your very generous donations of holiday gifts for two of our Stevens families through their Adopt a Family annual program. The families were very grateful for your generosity and kindness in helping to make the holidays extra special for their children. We appreciate your generosity and support of the EC Stevens Elementary. Thank you very much, Principal Christina Kiley. This one is also from interim principal Greg Dirksen. He's been very busy writing thank you notes. My next one is from him as well. This is also to Toyota of Wallingford. I know you've already heard of the very large donation, which was for the $20,000 in support of academic and social emotional materials to ensure student success as well as community building projects for the staff and the students at Pond Hill. So there's just not a big enough thank you for that donation and for the support that that's going to provide to the students and the faculty and the staff at that school. I echo every sentiment that has been said here. I mean, we probably want to shout it from the rooftops. Thank you so much. But additionally, Toyota of Wallingford also provided holiday gifts for Pond Hill families that were in a time of need, and so thank you for just going above and beyond. We truly can't say thank you enough. That's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Roscoe. Moving on to committee reports. Mr. Ross, was there an ACES meeting?
Virtually. Basically, we got the auditor's report on the budget, which I shared with everybody. And they talked about some real estate acquisitions they're looking at and another one they're selling. And we discussed a few expulsions, and that was it.
Thank you. System-wide PTAC update. Mrs. Latour or Mrs. Bolizzi?
Good evening, everyone. Last Tuesday evening, we had our first full PTAC meeting since October because we had the Parent Choice Awards in November. And we used the opportunity to have a quick follow-up about the budget presentation that was going to be occurring the next evening, the Facility Study Board of Education meeting where Ms. Bolizzi shared the details of where to find the information on the website for both meetings, as well as a recap of the Parent Choice Awards. New topics for a newly formed subcommittee were going to be recycling within the schools where the chairperson of that subcommittee, Mrs. Glynn, would be in touch with Mr. Deptula, our supervisor of Building and Grounds. And then we had the opportunity to go around to the participants in the meeting and do roundtable, which is when each local PTAC shares what their last meeting... When their last meeting was and what topics were discussed. So it was a great meeting. February's meeting will be that subcommittee meeting, and then we'll meet again as a full committee in March.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Turner, Special Education PTAC update.
Good evening. We did not have a meeting in December. Our next meeting is tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM. Mackenzie Brasovich, who is a consulting psychologist in our district. She works primarily with the preschool through grade-two schools. She's going to be presenting a topic called Understanding Your Child's Behavior and Supporting Positive Behaviors at Home, Supporting and Managing Behaviors at Home, which is a very relevant topic for us at this time. We will also, tomorrow evening, begin the big planning process for our Special Education Resource Fair. The Resource Fair is scheduled for April 25th at Lyman Hall High School, and this is where we bring companies from around the state as well as state services to come in and share their resources to our families. Last year, we had over 70 families from towns all over the area. It was very well attended. Not only were our families appreciative, but the vendors themselves. It was the first time they were out and about post-COVID, so they were all... You know, we've been receiving emails on a regular basis. When are you coming back? When are you having it? We want to come. So we were going to start that planning as well.
Wonderful. And that is a fabulous event, so thank you for all the effort you put into that. Next, we have the Food Service Strategic Planning Committee. Mr. Bondi, welcome.
So the Food Service Strategic Planning Committee met on January 19th. The discussion, main topic of discussion, was high school meal charging policy. We reviewed the overall current federal and state mandates on charging meals. We reviewed current practices at the high school. We looked at policies in other districts, and we talked about issues with charging and the principals account at the middle school level. We also discussed middle school breakfast, just a current update on the breakfast in the middle schools. And that's it.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Next, for the CAPE report, this will be brief. I just... I know I reached out to you, Mrs. Reed, to make sure that you receive the CAPE initiatives and the booklet for this legislative session. If there's anybody that has not received the booklet, there should have been a letter and a booklet mailed to your home address that would talk about all of the legislative updates. If you don't have that, just reach out to Linda, and we can get you a copy of it. Just so everybody is aware, CAPE, one of their initiatives this year or this season for the legislative session is to revisit the reading curriculum requirements, and that is, I think it's in their top three priorities. And I did share that letter that we received with the mayor, so he is aware that that's something that they are pursuing as well. That's all I have for the CAPE report. For old business, I have none. Next, we have executive session. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing leave of absence and resignations. Second. I have a first and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We're in executive session. Good evening, and we are back from executive session. The next item on our agenda this evening is the Instructional Committee, and I will turn that over to Mrs. Passeretti.
Thank you, Mrs. Raccio. The first item on the Instructional Committee agenda, item number 13.1, Approval of Leave of Absence. I'd like to make a motion that a leave of absence for Lisa Zenett be approved without pay and in accordance with the provisions of the current teacher's contract from January 3rd, 2023, through the end of the 2023 school year. Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item is 13.2, the Approval of Acceptance of Resignation. I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Justin Rich, effective February 18th, 2023. Justin Rich has been a family consumer science teacher since August of 2018. Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. That is all I have for Instructional Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Passeretti. Moving on to the Operations Committee, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Regan and Mrs. Costelli.
Good evening. So the Operations Committee, we've been very busy, but this... We met on January 9th for a regular meeting, and in that meeting, Mr. Barone went through the financials. We have a surplus of $709,000 with some increases of about $87,000 due to some salaries and transportation. We also... He also reviewed the summary of the 2% fund, and we made some additional items for the two to be used with that 2% fund. And then we went into the cafeteria report with Mr. Bondi and that we have a year-to-date, a monthly surplus of $11,374, and we have a year-to-date surplus of $318,710. This is where we talked about the high school lunches, which is the report that Mr. Bondi just gave. And then we did make a request to update some of the materials that Mr. Bondi had to reflect the correct number of serving days. And then Mr. Deptula talked about the security vestibules. He gave us some updates on those about the tracking field at Sheen and then the Lyman Hall softball field. So... And the last item that we discussed was the proposed school calendar for 2023 and 2024. And so now we'll move to the next operational item, which is number 14.2. We're going to do the discussion approval of the 2023-2024 school calendar as it was presented at the Operations Committee meeting. So I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and accept the calendar as proposed on January 9th.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a second. Is there any discussion? No? Then all in favor said aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. And that's all I have.
We're just tranking along. Thank you very much, Mrs. Regan and Mrs. Costelli. Moving on to the Administration Report. Superintendent Bolizzi.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just two quick items that I wanted to just recap. Last Wednesday evening, I presented the proposed central office budget via a Google Meet. So we shared an overall update in the presentation of what we have requested and proposed to start. We are at a 6.21%, which includes the 5.91% for sustained and the .30 for the strategic items that we presented. So that gives us the overall request of 6.21%. We have received feedback from all of our stakeholders, and so our plan for this Wednesday night, which is our 6 o'clock Google Meet, special board meeting for the budget, workshop number one, is we will prepare to go over Mr. Bondi's budget, the food services budget. We'll go through the sustained, and we'll also share questions and answers to the questions that we've received from board members so far. We also have some staff feedback that we can share as well. We'll continue as we move through to work through our workshop sessions on that. The last... The second thing I wanted to just remind everybody was the facilities update. Excuse me. So on January 11th, we had our public forum for facilities. We did our five-to-six meeting via a Google Meet, and then we did the in-person meeting at 6:30. So we are finishing and working on all of those questions that we did receive and working on a way to present that back to all of the stakeholders with our answers to those as best we can. We're going to wait until after we have the meeting with the state, which is scheduled for February 6th. That will have some of our Facilities Steering Committee members, some board members, some central office staff, along with Dave Stein on the meeting. And that will be an opportunity for us to review with the state the revised facility study that we did of all schools. It'll give us an opportunity to ask the state some questions and hopefully get some guidance from them. So we feel it'd be best that once we have all of that information, we'll then share that out with all stakeholders, with all the board members, and then have an ability to have a discussion as to, you know, ask questions again and what the feedback will be and next steps moving forward. So just a reminder on that, we didn't forget. It's just we're going to wait till the February 6th meeting after that one with the state to be able to provide it all at once. I'm going to turn it over at this time to Mrs. Latour to share some updates.
One question for Mrs. Passeretti.
Two quick questions.
Sure.
Was there a plan to have a town counselor at that meeting with the state?
Yes, we do have one. Thank you. I appreciate you reminding me of that. Yes, Mrs. Allenson will be there on the call as well. It is a virtual meeting.
Okay. And then my second question, if you could just very briefly... I know you said that you have a couple of questions for the state. Could you just very briefly give us the spirit of what those questions entail?
So I think what we're looking for is we've already provided them with the study. I sent that to them when we scheduled the meeting. So I think we all first want to hear what their feedback is for us. They had suggested we go back and look at all of the schools. But I have some questions initially to start with around the utilization of our high schools and what that will mean for us. of our high schools and, and what that will mean for us. Um, I think we had some questions regarding the reimbursement rate and then our VoAG center. Um, there was a little bit of, um, questioning around, does the 20-year out start with when we pulled the building permit, or does it start with, which is the difference in years, or does it start with the first day that it actually officially opened with our students coming in? So those are at least some of the things to start with. Um, and then I'm sure as we're sitting, talking with them virtually, there will be more to come, but those are some of the things that we're kind of highlighting as we're starting to think about moving forward and things for them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Evening again. Um, I just have two quick items, uh, for you. Our winter screen window opened upon return from the, um, holiday break. It closed this past Friday, so all 12 schools are in the process of analyzing the results, um, doing additional diagnostics on students as needed and, um, firming up intervention caseloads for the second window of time. Um, today, we had, uh, personnel from iReady, which is our K8 universal screen, doing professional development with our building administrators to assist them in looking at the winter data as compared to the fall data, um, providing, um, perspective into the different reports that they could look at, uh, steps to take with their teachers at grade-level meetings. Um, the PD session that both Ms. Blizzi, Mrs. Turner, and myself sat in on as well was very well received. Um, and the building principals have a lot of great information to bring back to their staff. I do want to say that at first blush, the results showed a significant amount of movement for our students, which is absolutely due to the hard work of our building principals and, most importantly, our classroom teachers in meeting the individual needs of our students. Changing universal screeners, um, which we have done this year, K-12, is not an easy process. Um, it comes with its, um, quirks, let me just say that. Uh, but, um, it really has paid off in terms of the growth that we've seen. You'll see that, um, perspective fall to winter in the improvement plans that you'll be getting over the course of the next few weeks. Um, and I can't tell you how pleased I am with what we've seen in a really short amount of time. And given that it's only January and we have kind of our, our long stretch now of instruction, hopefully uninterrupted, um, if winter continues to be the way it is, um, I am sure that we'll see even more growth as time moves on. So, um, a lot of good news coming out of, uh, the December holiday break, um, and more good news to come.
I have a couple of really quick things for you as well. So this week and next week, the third, fifth, and seventh graders will be taking the OSAT. This is one of the, um, things that we use to identify giftedness and the gifted process. So they will take that this week. Uh, when the results come back, the next, the families will be identified, um, if their child is eligible for the next part of the screening process. Preschool lottery registration opened January 17th. Um, it, families definitely found out very quickly that it was open. Uh, it will be open until, um, February 24th at 3 o'clock. We will be drawing the lottery on March 17th, at NICE St. Patrick's Day present. Uh, families will be notified, uh, the week of the 20th, whether or not their child, um, was chosen in the lottery. Uh, and then we will go forward with the registration process after that for those, um, students, and that is for four-year-olds and three-year-olds. That can be found on our website. It's right on the first homepage, Preschool Lottery Registration. Families are, um, definitely urged, you know, to go on there and register if they have a three or four-year-old that they would like to come to preschool in Wallingford. Finally, Frank Piccone is presenting a workshop series called Growing Resilience. It's a three-part series. Um, it'll include two virtual sessions and one in-person session. We have 74 families registered already, which is phenomenal. Um, the first session is February 15th. We ask families to register by February 5th. Have a great night.
Mrs. Reed?
Mrs. Turner, I was just wondering, how many spots do we give for the preschool and how many, like, approximate applications do we receive?
That is a loaded question.
Oh. Can you please repeat the question, too? I don't think it picked up. I don't know if you're...
Yes. Um, how many spots do we offer for the preschool and how many applications do we get in terms of the...
Sure. So, um, I don't have a set number of spots that I can tell you this evening. What we do, just so everybody knows, is we look at our three-year-olds that are planning on returning. Um, our three-year-olds that are already in the program are guaranteed a spot. Um, the, also, we look at the number of special education students that are coming up from three to four, as well as from birth to three into three-year-old classes. So our four-year-old classes are, we set them at 16 students per class. Um, this year, uh, Mrs. Latour and I, with Ms. Gaffney, have really discussed, um, the half-day four-year-old program. We are no longer going to have the half-day four-year-old programs because we have found that for our families in Wallingford, it's very difficult. Uh, they just weren't able to arrange that midday pickup for their children. Uh, so we weren't finding families were able to take those slots. So we've actually made that into two full-day classrooms this year. So, um, that is a change that we have made. What was the second part of your question?
Approximately, how many applications do we get?
So I can tell you, as of, um, 15 minutes ago, we had 245, and, um, that's a significant number, more than slots that we have.
Well, I would just like to say that this is my sixth year on the Board of Ed, and I think this is the first monthly board meeting that we don't have policy on the agenda. And I want to just...
That is correct.
I just want to take a moment to recognize the heavy lift that the Policy Committee and Mrs. Latour have done over the past several years, updating our policies and getting us to this point. It was a heavy lift. There were many long evenings, difficult conversations, multiple policies revisited multiple, multiple times. Um, but we've arrived. And, um, Mrs. Latour, thank you very much, Mrs. Passeretti, for chairing the committee, and Mrs. Castelli for years and years and years on the committee. You probably can recite the policies by number, not just what's in them.
No, not quite, but I was, I was part of the formation of it, so I've been there from day one.
Yep. So I just want to congratulate all of you and say thank you for getting us to where we are, because it was a heavy lift.
You are welcome. And we did it in half the time that CAPE said it was going to take. I'll just throw that out there as well.
Yes, we survived, and we did it in the Mrs. Latour timeframe.
That's right.
I think Mrs. Castelli and I should get a bonus in our paycheck for that.
Yes, we'll double your pay for that.
Nice.
Mr. Ross?
Uh, yes. On behalf of the Public Celebrations Committee, I would like to thank the Administration and the students for Martin, for their participation in Martin Luther King Day. Uh, the artwork around this, this hall is amazing. And the parents have come in to see it during the day. Some people have come in. We had a book published, uh, self-published of the writings, what the Martin Luther King meant to them, and our speakers were excellent. So on behalf of the Public Celebrations, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Moving on to announcements, we have some meetings to announce. On Wednesday, January 25th, as Mrs. Blizzi already mentioned, we will have a Special Operations Committee meeting for a purpose of our discussion of, further discussion of the budget at 6:00 PM via Google Meet. We will also have one on January 3rd. February 1st will be, if needed, both of those for 6:00 PM. Monday, February 6th will be our next Instructional Committee meeting at 6:00 PM. Wednesday, the 8th, will be another Special Operations Budget meeting, if needed. Monday, the 13th, will be a Special Board of Education meeting at 6:00 PM, followed by our regularly scheduled Operations Committee at 6:30 PM. Both of those will be via Google Meet with separate links to each one. And then on Wednesday, February 15th, if we need it, we would have our final Budget Committee meeting for discussion and review of the budget. Our next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting will be Monday, February 27th, here in Robert F. Prese Town Council Chambers at 6:30 PM. If there is no other official business to come before the board this evening, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you and have a good evening.